We're gonna call the roll and then I believe I have an opening statement I gotta read here. Let me find it. There we go. Okay, here's. Okay, okay. You wanna call the roll then?
Mayor Bud.
Okay, Marlene, you sound pretty muffled. Is the microphone close to you or is it far away? Yeah, you sound, you sound like, yeah, you don't, you don't have a clear, um, yeah, it's not very clear.
Can you hear me now?
Recording in progress.
Yeah, I mean, I can hear you, but it sounds like this when you talk, so.
That's how much.
Okay, that's a little bit better.
That's a little better, I'll speak louder. Okay.
Okay.
Mayor Bud Shaw.
I'm here.
Yes, Vice Mayor Svechnikov.
Yeah.
Commissioner Goldman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Viscara. She's out, and Commissioner Lama.
Yeah.
Excellent, everybody's here. Okay, I have an opening statement, since we have another virtual meeting, I have to read, so I'm gonna read my opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for joining us tonight. Please ensure that your microphone is muted to avoid interrupting the proceedings tonight. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to raise, to use the raise hand function, which can be located by the following these steps. If you're using an iPad, tap the center of your screen, tap on the three dots located at the top right-hand corner, and select raise hand. If you're using a desktop, click on Participants at the bottom of your screen, which opens a side window listing all the participants. On the participant screen, click on the three dots located on the bottom left-hand corner, and select raise hand. If you called in and are listening on your phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, and the city clerk will call on you based on the last four digits of your phone number. When called upon, please state your name and address for the record. Speakers may also use the chat function to submit their comments and questions, and these chats are only available to the commission and the host or chair will read it into the record. The chat function is located at the bottom of the screen, so please make sure to type in your name and address for the record. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments, and all speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment, and if you don't adhere to the chair's advice, your microphone will be turned off. So, okay, with that, we will start our meeting. Who is, who's kicking it off? Is it Kathy?
Kathy.
Are you, okay, Kathy's driving, Kathy's driving tonight, so, thank goodness.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
Thank you, Kathy.
Vice Mayor and City Commissioners. After almost two years, we are very excited to be entering the final stages of our rebranding project. So this is a citywide rebranding project. When we first started this project back in 2019, our goal was to create a brand that was co-created with our community, something that was based on research. So we spent a lot of time, as we remember in our first workshop, discussing the research that we did, including focus groups, phone surveys, and online surveys, to really get a gauge on the community and the vision for the future. We also wanted something that was unique to us and representative of all components of our city, so including our residents, our unique location, our natural environment, the built environment, our city services, and our service-first approach to our, serving our community. And it needed to be something that created excitement, something that was forward-thinking, ambitious, but realistic and true to who we are, something that we could really embody in every touch point and every interaction with our stakeholders. So with this project, we've really had the opportunity to create something alongside our community that will have a lasting impact, something that will reposition us in a way that will have a significant positive influence on our community and will accurately represent us for the exceptional city that we truly are. So throughout this process, our research and feedback from the community through our focus groups and our surveys was truly the driving force behind what you'll see tonight and all of the brand elements that are being proposed this evening. Since our last workshop a couple of months ago, we've been working diligently with Jacober Creative, our rebranding firm, to explore various options for all of our branding elements, and this includes our core values, our mission statement, vision statement, tagline, logo, colors, and fonts. We've, we've worked with various iterations, craftly, carefully crafting each piece of our new brand, and we've also taken all the feedback that we've received from our individual one-on-one meetings with each of you, as well as each member of our Public Arts Advisory Committee. And we've worked with Jacober to incorporate a lot of these suggestions that we received to really present the best recommendation possible. And like I said, this really has been a long time coming for us. It's been almost two years of work, and I really must commend Jacober Creative and their entire team for their exceptional work with this project. They really have gone above and beyond, and their dedication to really getting something that is very representative of us and something that really will propel us into the future and something that we can all be very proud of. They really have left no stone unturned and really explored every single comment that came their way, every suggestion that we've received to date, and have taken all that information to put together something that will be very special to us. So I'm very confident tonight that what you will see is really the truly best, very best recommendation for us. So with all that being said, if there are no questions, I would like to turn over the presentation to Louisa and Paul from Jacober Creative. And after the, their presentation, we will open it up for comments from the public. I believe we've received a couple of public comments already, and then open it up for discussion with the commission.
Okay, Louisa and Paul, nice to see you again.
Likewise.
Nice to see you again.
Okay. All right, the virtual Zoom stage is yours.
All right, thank you so much. Give me a moment while I pull up. Do I share screen?
All right. Second here. Fantastic.
All right, and can everyone see?
Fantastic. Great, I'm just gonna click here. Sorry, here. So, again, it's great to see, see everybody again. Thank you for having us. Most of you know me already, Paul Jacober, the owner and creative director of Jacober Creative. And this is Louisa Jimenez, our Director of Marketing and Brand Strategy. I was gonna say for only a couple more hours. But, um, so today, we are, we're here. We're going to take you through the process, starting with the recap, the research recap, the brand positioning, how we got to the core values, and how those led to the mission statement and vision statement, all the way to the tagline and into the finale, the grand finale, the logo. So this phrase from the RFP perfectly encapsulated what our overall goal was for the project. "The goal of this rebranding campaign is to create a unified and identifiable look that residents can connect with, businesses want to work with, and employees are proud to represent." And with this in mind, we carefully crafted our research strategy.
So we decided to take this one step further and really break this up into five distinct objectives. The first being to create a unified brand, that, a brand identity that reflects the evolution of the city and its future growth, to connect the local government with the community it serves, to inspire resident engagement with the city, both in person and online, to attract potential businesses and investors to the area, to position the city of Sunny Isles Beach as a safe, responsive, and sought-after community. So with all this in mind, it's important to never lose sight of really what we're striving for. And so we're just gonna do a quick research recap, which we already went through in our last workshop together, so this should be just a refresher for everyone present. So just to begin with, you know, our research strategy really encompassed a mix of qualitative and quantitative research. For qualitative research, we conducted three focus groups comprising of city employees, local business owners and operators, and residents. And really, the goal of this was for us to be able to gather these really distinct and unique groups and be able to really gain a deeper insight into the city and their very unique perspectives. For our quantitative portion, a phone survey was fielded to proactively reach out to Sunny Isles Beach residents, while an online survey in three languages was also put out for residents, businesses, and visitors to submit their input. Now, we received a total of 941 responses, responses which received a level of 95% of confidence and a margin of error of 3.2%. So what does that mean? We feel very confident about what our research findings were able to tell us at the end of the day. Oops, there we go.
And so coming into this project, there were numerous concerns expressed about the perceived divide between residents on the west and east sides of Collins Avenue. And we were well aware of the many differences between the two sides of this beach-side community. These concerns resurfaced during the focus group phase of the research, but something we took away and thought was very, was a very unique take on it, was from a resident. Where he enthusiastically and sincerely spoke about the sense of flow between the city and that nobody misses out. Residents get the sunrise and some get the sunset. And it was a very refreshing and neighborly way to look at it.
In addition to that, one of the things that also surfaced were that there were four main pillars that really everyone from the focus groups coalesced around. The landscape, really, which, you know, meant access to the beach and the intercoastal, as well as the parks and recreation, the pier, as Paul mentioned, sunrises and sunsets. The people, the fact that the city's very family-oriented, it's friendly, welcoming, diverse, and multicultural, and then it has a very distinct international flavor. The location, it's conveniently located near major highways with easy access to both Miami Dade and Broward County for airport and entertainment venues. And then, of course, the quality of life, that was something that kept on coming up again and again. The fact that it's safe, clean, you know, kids are free to explore and play, the school is A-rated, there's accessibility to government and elected officials, and that really, that there are events and amenities for all age groups. And when we first sort of probed on sort of the defining characteristics of the city, our respondents really pointed to the following words, that it was feminine, colorful, luxurious, fun, but also casual. So we really took that into account when building out sort of the basis and the foundation of our brand identity and how that was going to be constructed in all the supporting elements. Which just brings us to the brand positioning. So as we had mentioned before, you know, the city has high approval ratings and really a lot of strong municipal assets, but what it was really lacking, and the reason we're here today, is because it didn't really have a strong, single identity in the public mind. And so, you know, we see that as the room for improvement for our both branding and marketing purposes. And this is where having, you know, a strong brand positioning really comes into play. And so what we wanna do is sort of construct a framework for that from the beginning. So understanding, you know, who the brand positioning, what the brand positioning is, who it speaks to, where it stands, and what it offers. So our primary target are current and potential residents. Our secondary targets are investors, businesses, and visitors. Our category is in the oceanfront communities in Miami Dade County. And the benefits that the city offers are the beautiful beach, the safe surroundings, family-friendly parks and recreation, progressive urban planning, and world-class architecture. So to wrap that all up in a nice little package, our main message is that the city of Sunny Isles Beach is a South Florida oceanfront community that offers a pillars, the quality, upscale lifestyle for all citizens, a beautiful landscape, a safe and family-friendly environment, culturally rich municipal amenities, and a progressive urban vision. So that being said, you know, this is really, as I mentioned, the framework for all the supporting elements that really make up that Sunny Isles Beach brand. And so we'll dive in from the brand positioning into the core values. And really, you know, it's so important to reiterate that, you know, it's important to have clear and defined set of core values for every organization, whether it's municipal or commercial organization. The terms that we are presenting to you today, so there are six core values, these were terms that were repeated time and time again during our focus groups. And we actually saw that these were actually further bolstered in our observations of how they were already present in municipal initiatives. So you'll see, you know, it really, all really surrounds, you know, that notion of quality, both in quality of life and, you know, the quality of the offerings that the city extends to its residents and its visitors and its businesses. And then it branches out into safety, innovation, inclusivity, sustainability, and of course, integrity. So as we mentioned, you know, these really inform, you know, our mission and vision statements as well, as well as the tagline that we'll be talking about, and then the brand identity that we'll be revealing in the logo. So, mission statement. So it's important to understand what a mission statement is and why it's important. So mission statements define why your business exists and why it's important, including the problems that you're aiming to solve. It explains an organization's plan for the present based on what it wants to achieve. So really, you know, in the case of municipal entities, you know, what we do is consider this as like our North Star or guide for employees on what their day-to-day goals are, while also serving as a brand promise for what citizens can expect from their government. And for the city of Sunny Isles, the city of Sunny Isles Beach's mission is to enrich the quality of life for all by providing excellent service, building on its reputation as a culturally rich and inclusive community, cultivating a safe and harmonious environment where residents, businesses, and visitors can thrive. So while that is sort of the North Star of our day-to-day, that sort of brings us to our vision statement, which is a little bit, it's distinct in that it is creative, ambition, ambitious, and really should have a logical connection to the mission. But, you know, rather than being sort of that roadmap, that day-to-day roadmap, it's the destination that's based on the missions, where you want to get to. So vision statements declare where your organization wants to be in the future. And it's framed in an aspirational, forward-thinking manner. Vision statements help organizations make strategic decisions aligning efforts with goals. And for the city of Sunny Isles Beach, it is to be the most coveted oceanfront community in all of South Florida, known for its exceptional quality of life, responsive municipal government, dynamic and inclusive community, and commitment to preserving its natural environment. So with all that being said, sort of, those are sort of the, the basics and the framework for, for what the city's brand is and what it, you know, strives to do and achieve, you know, both in the short and the long term. And now we get a little bit more into the creative aspects of what that brand identity is and how we're shaping it to be a little bit more public. So in tagline, what makes a good tagline? So this is always a fun exercise because, you know, this is sort of always very highly subjective. But some, you know, key things to keep in mind when evaluating what makes a tagline successful is that it should be simple, straightforward, and honest. It should sort of clearly define it from your competitive set. It should reflect a benefit of what is offered, whether functional or emotional. And it should be very brief, so brevity lends itself to memorability. And sometimes it's worth taking a look to see what the sort of competition, in air quotes, is doing. Some of these may be instantly recognizable, like the Magic City. Others are generic to the point of anonymity. But overall, you can see that municipal tagline options can really run the gamut. For the city of Sunny Isles Beach, we feel strongly that the best tagline that captures its essence and its unique value proposition is the height of living. The height of living has roots in the feedback that we received from the resident focus group. They unequivocally pointed to the quality of life that they experience in Sunny Isles as being their main draw and what keeps them hooked. So this tagline really, you know, as I mentioned, boldly encompasses why, you know, so many new and longtime residents, you know, point to as that enduring attraction of the city. And it also sort of obliquely references the landscape of high-rises that make the city of Sunny Isles Beach such a uniquely distinct skyline.
And so, the drumroll, I guess, to the logo. So from the height of living tagline, we paired it with a modern and contemporary visual that would personify the new slogan, embody the city's ethos, and illustrate the world-renowned skyline. We created an icon that had a purposely upward trajectory. We married the rays of the sun in a unique way that gives a nod to the skyline but also projects out in a joyful and energetic manner. The icon represents a bridge between the sunrises and the sunsets referenced in the research findings and symbolizes the buildings that make up the city's beautiful silhouette. The lines have a skyward direction representing the progress and the quality of the community. It's, it's something that has a visual versatility where the nameplate can really hug the icon or stand separately underneath. The typeface, a clean, straightforward type, sort of the epitome of sophistication and effortless elegance, is a sort of a no-fuss, no-muss approach. And the top four colors from the research efforts were blue, green, yellow, and white. And with collaboration from the Sunny Isles Branding Committee, these specific colors were deemed best to really represent the new visuals. And the next step is really to showcase the new logo on marketing materials, collateral, or any media material used to promote the city's objectives or services. This includes everything from print materials like posters and flyers to digital content like the website and social media, basically anything you can use to communicate the city's brand message. And the application of a logo, everything it lands on, it adds a sense of an elevated image. It creates a narrative of a unified brand identity showcasing the evolution of a city and its future growth. From uniforms to casual attire, great visuals are the best way to inspire resident engagement with the city, to brand yourself, to convey that you are reputable, upscale, and responsive to the community's needs. It travels from the beach to the boardroom, from your desk to other promotional objects. It shines, no pun intended, on the digital applications like the sample mock-up for our website to social media posts. And ultimately, this logo shows your, represents and shows your commitment. It conveys a sense of municipal and personal pride that will trickle throughout the community and beyond. Thank you.
Wow. Okay, great job. Really good job, I know. Yeah, let's give him a hand.
Thank you.
I personally, you know, I was telling Kathy the other day, you know, I've been through a bunch of these, and it's like an exorcism for me, you know? I just, it's really hard. It's really hard, and I rarely like the final pick or anything like this, but I really think you guys clearly did a lot of research, and I think you really captured, you know, you, you, you clearly captured like the essences, I think, what, what, what people think and feel. And I also, I also, I like the reference to living, you know, because, you know, I don't know, some, some of our surrounding municipalities, I'm not sure about evolving senses and things of that nature, but, but, but I, but I like the reference a lot. So, okay, let me start with, Marlene, do we have, do we have some, any comments from the public that need to be written to the record?
Yes, we do. Nice. We're gonna try to speak loud so you guys can hear me.
Okay, go ahead.
This one is from Peter Lovella.
Yep, lovely, yep, yep.
He said, "We all met roundtable before the pandemic. I believe I might have commented. If it ain't broke, then don't fix it. However, since the lockdown, I did think about it and have come up with an idea I'd like to introduce for tonight's meeting. Welcome to Sunny Isles Beach, a place to call home. Welcome to Sunny Isles Beach, proud to call home." And he says, "Note: If you're reaching for the opposite appeal, then drop the word 'beach.' Welcome to Sunny Isles, Isle of Enchantment." We have a second.
Peter's great. Yeah, yeah, Peter's a special guy, he's very artistic. But Peter, the train left the station on this one, so. So we're already, so the train's already arrived, so, okay, Marlene, go ahead on the next one.
Angel Venega, or Venegay. He said, "Moved to Sunny Isles Beach on October 2020. My wife and I love the place. I read the branding report and loved it. A lot of good information, especially for a newbie. Although a newbie, I would like to let you know of some of my observations, and I see and feel the growing pain, but hear and hope they help. The sidewalks on Collins Avenue are very narrow and very obstructive with utility poles and other objects which could be avoided with easement and put on adjacent locations. Understand cause. Then, as an asterisk, residents should be able to have access to those fancy restaurants, resorts at affordable pricing."
Thank you.
Those are the only two we had.
Okay, is that it?
Well, there was one, Irina and Lee Carlin, but their comments were just no comment, first-time, new resident.
Okay, okay, thank you there for putting in the record if they reached out. Okay, and I don't see anything on the chat, so I'm gonna, this is, this isn't really an official meeting, so it's not like a public hearing, but I'm gonna close it and I'm gonna, and I'll roundtable the commission. So Alex, you, you, you wanna, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I think, great job. I applaud you all. I know it takes a lot of work and a lot of time, a lot of brainstorming back and forth, so I think the log, the logo is great, I love the logo. The tagline is good, there's just one thing I have, I don't know about the word "height", and I discussed this with Susan and Kathy. But that's pretty much it. I mean, I think that you nailed it. Not to say that the tagline is not the right one, I think is the right one and what you're trying to express with it, I think it pretty encompasses everything, pretty much, but I'm a little bit doubtful about, or apprehensive about the word "height". That's it for me.
Thanks, Alex.
You're welcome.
Dana?
Very happy, the logo is outstanding, it's really a winner winner.
Dana, Dana, can I interject? Sorry, I, I, I was thinking, I forgot to say that. I, I was thinking more along the lines of the joy of living instead of the height of living, something like that, I don't know. So that's kind of like my, my idea, yeah. Sorry, Dana.
Got it.
Not at all.
All right, Dana, go ahead.
The logo's outstanding, I gotta tell you, you guys really, really nailed it with that logo. It is absolutely sensational, I'm extremely happy with the logo. Big improvement on the color selection, thank you Kathy. Took those comments, some of those comments to heart from the commission, I suppose. And vast improvement on the, on the color scheme. Loved the mission statement from the get-go and the vision. I think actually, I, I think the tagline is actually kind of clever, I love that double entendre, and, and I think it's very, I think it's just, I think it's great. I think it's really cosmopolitan and chic, it's just everything, just, you just, you knocked it out of the park. Really excellent job, very happy. Very good, very good.
Thank, thank you Dana, that's great. Vice Mayor?
Um, I wanna agree with Commissioner Goldman, I think you did a phenomenal job. I, I worked in advertising many, many years, and I know how challenging this is. And I will say that I was a little nervous when you were presenting the, the findings at first, but, and when Kathy presented the, the tagline, I had the same kind of reaction as Alex. I, you know, the, the word "height" kind of was like a punch to the gut. And Kathy said, "Just let it sink in."
Is what it is.
And exactly, and I, and I, and I thought to myself, "Well, it's honest." And, um, you know, and then I thought, "How does it translate?" And so I actually, you know, maybe, I, I asked my mother, who speaks mostly Russian, and I translated the word "height", and I said, "What does this mean to you?" And she said, "Well, it means phenomenal, great, wonderful." And I said, "Okay, so, you know, it, it translates well, at least I know it in Russian." And then when you presented it right now, and I saw the tagline again, I had the opposite feeling. It, it was, it uplifted me. I didn't feel, you know, like it was bringing me down. So you did, I mean, really phenomenal job, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the, the comment.
Thank you. So, I know where Alex is coming from, but I also feel that we have what we have, you know? And the fact is, the fact is, you know, I don't think that we can try to satisfy everybody and, and, and I think the objection- and I think the objection, the objection is, the objection really isn't as much to the buildings by certain people as it is just to the, to their perception of overdevelopment. You know, I think, I think most everybody in the city will agree the buildings are beautiful in their own right because, you know, we've got some of the best architects in the world and what have you. So I think, I think it's a reasonably vocal minority that would get rankered by the notion of height being in the tagline. And to Dana's point, it's double entendre at the end of the day. Frankly, if you're from outside of the city, you're not, you're gonna think it's the height of living, to Vice Mayor's point. You're gonna think it's, you know, it's, it's the, it's just, you know, it's the pinnacle of living. You're not gonna, you're not gonna even pick up on the double entendre until you get here, and it still may not dawn on you. So I think it works so well, and I love the fact that you could use the logo, you know, you can, you can change it for different applications, like the bag where the lines went all the way up to the top of the bag. That's really cool, I mean, it's really interesting, and again, and again, it can be interpreted a bunch of different ways, it can be interpreted as rays of sunshine, it can be interpreted as a, you know, as a, I get that, and I think, and clearly, you know, that's not lost on us. So I, I think you nailed it, you know, like, you know, I usually say my opinion doesn't matter on this kind of stuff because I have like very little marketing sense, you know, but I have gone through these exercises on a number of occasions with, you know, one global firm, one national firm, a couple of local firms. And frankly, you know, so I have a little, a little bit of background in what you go through to try to, to try to come up with this stuff. And I think you did a great job, so I frankly wouldn't change a thing and, you know, and I would say that, you know, the whole team, the effort was good, it was very inclusive of the community, I liked the confidence interval. I think, you know, we're gonna have some naysayers, it's always, you know, everything we do on the commission, we're gonna upset half the public, so, you know, we tend to try to, we tend to try to work from the heart, I think, just because we know that we're never gonna make everybody happy. But at the same time, in a situation like this, you know, I think you were, you know, the commission did not act independently on this, you know, you went out to the public, you went through an exhaustive exercise, you adapted for COVID, and you came up with a great solution, so, and a great work product. So I assume we're gonna get a style guide and all that kind of stuff along with everything, and yeah, so that'd be great. So, so I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you.
This is a work, yeah, this is a workshop, right, we're not, this is a workshop, not a meeting, correct? Okay, that's what I thought, so this is just, just to get some comment. Okay, I think I see, I see some Q and A down here. Okay, is this, I can't see the name.
Fabio.
Let me see here. Is it Fabio? Okay, I just see Fab, dot, 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 okay. "As a design professional, I very much like the logo. My only comment is that the lines represent the ocean, look too much like a crosswalk rather than the ocean." And so I don't think they, I don't know, you know, I think they represent the rays of the sun, and maybe, so, I don't know that they represent a crosswalk, but, 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 you know, we appreciate the comment. Maybe you guys want to speak to the symbolism of the lines?
I was gonna say, and it was never intended to be a literal representation of the ocean at all. I think it became a little bit symbolizing more of that because of the placement of the blue there, but it was always really about the sunrises and the sunsets and this upward trajectory.
Yeah, and also with, you know, any sort of successful brand is that you imbue your own set of, you know, your references and your frame of thinking into it. And so we love that, you know, everyone takes their own little perspective of this, this branding into, into their, their perspective.
And frankly, if people interpret it as a crosswalk, maybe it's like a public safety symbolism or something, which we could really, which we could use, which we could use in our, in our reputation. So, so, okay, are there any other comments? I don't see any from the public. I just see another one popped up here, okay. "But the sunrises and sunsets on Sunny Isles occur over water," so, thank you. They do, they do, but again, I think what we're hearing is that it's symbolic for how you interpret it, so, thank you. Okay, any, any other comments from the staff? Does anybody have anything they want to add? Kathy, you wanna, you wanna mop it up?
Absolutely, so the next steps, we're gonna work with Paul and Luisa to wrap this up into a branding style guideline, the entire campaign, all of that launch to hopefully launch this internally, develop everybody internally as our own brand ambassadors, fully endorse this, and then bring this into fruition to the public in early fall.
Great, great, all right, all right, you guys, great job. Thank you very, very much, and kudos to the staff for pulling it together, Kathy and team, you guys did a great job. You know, we really appreciate it, so. And, and our Mauricio standard, Marlene, you did very good, we gotta get you a headset though, that's all. You know, you and Claudia need to share the same headset, you know, that new headset we're gonna get. So Susan, did you want to add anything?
I did, thank you. I really just wanted to thank all of you also and the residents that are watching, some that were in the focus group or watching on TV or attending tonight. And Fabio, thank you, he's one of our PAC members, so he has been very involved. And a lot of his feedback was shared with Chakover. But all of your feedback, Kathy has a list of questions, and she, you know, they went through all of them and they did a lot of work to turn this around really quick. So really appreciate everybody's input and effort, and that's how we made, you know, something that was co-created. And just a reminder, it'll be on the July agenda in person for you to approve.
Excellent, okay, thanks everybody, thanks, all right, great job. Meeting is adjourned, thanks everybody, see ya.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.